Good evening. You look good, right?
Let me unmute.
Okay.
We're good.
We're good, okay. Welcome to the Noah's zoning board meeting of October 22, 2024. This meeting is being recorded by Noah Community Media and also by GoToMeeting for the town here. I would ask everyone at this time to please silence all electronic devices. I'd like to explain the format for all of our hearings. All parties wishing to offer comments and testify on matters before the board must approach the podium and state their name and address for the record. The applicant or their representative will address the board and provide evidence and testimony supporting their proposal. Members of the board may ask questions before, during, or after the applicant's presentation. Following the questions and comments from the board, I'll open up the meeting for people to speak. And anyone wishing to speak again, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record. And we'll also, we've received several written comments, and at the end of that, we'll call those into question. After everyone has spoken, either here in present or on GoToMeeting, all questions, if there's any questions for the applicant, should come through the chair. Following that, we'll give the applicant an opportunity to make a final statement and address any issues that were brought forth at this meeting. At that point, the board will then consider continuing the public hearing or moving to close the public hearing. If the board so chooses to close the public hearing, the board may proceed to deliberate and vote on the proposal. We have two matters before us this evening. The first one is case 2024-24, 241 Pleasant Street. I'll read the notice that appeared in the Noah record. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the Town of Noah will hold a public hearing on October 22, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. On the request of Edward Musto regarding property located at 241 Pleasant Street, Noah, Mass. 02062, in the general residence zoning district, this hearing will be held at the Noah Senior Center, 275 Prospect Street, Noah, Mass. 02062. It will be also available for remote participation via Google Meet. This application requests an extension to a variance under zoning bylaw section 3.1.5.8.3 to construct in addition to the existing single-family resident that would convert the structure to a two-family resident that exceeds the maximum allowable floor area. Any zoning relief that may be required in adherence to the Noah zoning bylaw shall be considered by the board. Interested parties are encouraged to attend the hearing and make their matters known to the board. Plans are on file with this application in the office of the Zoning Board of Appeals and may be requested by emailing comdev@noahma.gov Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. We did receive a letter from the applicant to the Zoning Board of Appeals due to financial issues. I'm requesting a six-month extension of time for variance, green on September 12, 2023. The decision was recorded at the Norfolk Registry of Deeds on October 27, 2023, Book 41479, page 474, Document 70575. That's signed by Edward Musto. And I see Mr. Musto is here. Then you approach the podium, state your name and address, and tell us, give us some more information on your request, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ed Musto, 36 Blue Hill Drive, Westwood. I planned on starting the project during the year, but I had a couple of financial setbacks on selling a house in Westwood. We finally sold the house on October 11th. It's going to free up some money so I can pursue the project. That's why I'm here this evening, to request the six-month extension of the variance.
Any questions from the board?
I have a question on the six-month timeframe, so it sounds like you believe that the cash would be, whatever you need financially would be available to actually make substantial movement.
It's now available, yes. We had a buyer for the other house back in February. That deal fell through. Another second buyer came along, and that deal was concluded on October 11th of this year.
And so has any, so no work then has proceeded so far on the property?
None.
No work has proceeded in the year since the last?
Throwing up plans to satisfy the concerns of the zoning board that we discussed last year, sequence in the buildings, one in front of the other. We've worked on that. We presented the original, the draft plan to Gary Pelletier. He made a couple of comments on it, so that's, we're marching with those comments, and that's the way we'll present the proposed structure. There's an issue regarding 12 feet of common wall that we have to have to attach the two structures to one another. And we had asked if we could put a deck between the two structures, and his response was, no, that the two structures have to meet for a distance of 12 feet.
And that's because of the zoning code?
Yes.
That's not his personal, yeah, that's because, that's what the code says.
Yes, zoning code, yes.
Yeah, yeah. Anything else?
No, no, no questions.
Do you have a contractor signed up, under contract? Somebody to do the work?
Myself, no, yeah.
You're gonna do it yourself?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, not, you know, I'll be responsible for it.
Okay. My concern is that if you don't have a contractor, you don't have somebody to do the work, six months might not be enough time, and therefore you have to come back again. So that's my concern.
I understand.
Just to that point, Matt, speaking with the building inspector, there's only one six-month extension allowed, so, okay. So, are the funds available now?
They will be, yes, they're available now, yes.
So, funds are available. You've got the plans all set with the building inspector?
Well, we, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, we, the, the building commissioner made comment on the plan, so the plans are in the process of being drawn up.
What's the timeframe on that?
Probably have the plans in a week and a half, two weeks.
So I guess my question is, funds are available, you have the plans in two weeks. Why do you need six months?
You can't build it overnight, Mr. Chairman.
I'm not asking you to build it, I'm asking you to pull the building permit. They said this gives you six months before you pull the permit.
I need the plans to pull the building permit.
Right, that's two weeks.
Yeah, so I can have.
Funds are available. I'm not telling you to build it in 90 days, but what I'm saying is, if the funds are available and the plans will be done, even if you give you a month, I just don't know why you need six months for this request.
To build it?
Not to build it, to pull the permit.
To pull the permit.
That's where it starts, right? We all know that. Okay.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a line of questioning.
Yep.
For the benefit of colleagues who weren't on the hearing in the last calendar year, this is a new variance. There was a similar variance granted by a prior iteration of the board that expired because the board upheld a determination of the building commissioner. That work did not commence under the variance, under the requisite statutory period. After appeal of our upholding of the building commissioner's decision, the board granted a new variance.
Correct.
So we're really looking at an extension on an extension of a slightly modified form of the variance. And on that point, I will note that the opinion that was reported incorrectly reflected a unanimous approval of the variance. And I will make note, as I discussed with the staff, that I objected to the variance as I believed it would be improperly granted without authority.
And that was from the?
That was from the 2023, it was confirmed, yeah, the minutes are accurate as approved.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is like four years. Anyone wish to speak on this matter at this time? Yes, if you would come up, thank you, Mr. Musto, we'll give you an opportunity. State your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Corte-Parche. I live at 251 Pleasant Street. And my issue with allowing Mr. Musto to have an extension is I don't think he follows through with anything that we have requested. Last time I was here, he was required to repeal the fence. Well, to me, that was unsatisfactory work. And furthermore, his contractor, the fence man, used the, hooked up his equipment to my home, my outside outlet, and was using my electricity. So I'm not happy with his workmanship, and I don't feel that he follows through, so that's my issue. And I think this is gonna, I, to be honest, I would be happy if it took the rest of his life to do this, because I'm hoping it doesn't happen. It probably will take longer than what we anticipate, and I'm okay with that. The longer it takes, the happier I will be, but I'm not happy with him going forward with this in the first place, because I don't feel that he is a very good neighbor for me, because I'm not satisfied with his workmanship. And I feel that if he ever tried to do this in his hometown, they'd run him out of town. And I'm not happy with his workmanship.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here like to speak on this matter? Is there anyone, yes, we finished. Anyone in GoToMeeting that would like to speak on this matter of 241 Pleasant Street? Gary, do you have any comments?
I'll just make a couple of quick comments for the record.
Yes.
So to one of the board members, Rachel, yeah, the original variance was granted September 19th, 2019, and it told through COVID and the state of emergency, and then lapsed after several building permit extensions. No work was done. As you know, there was a new request, a new variance was granted. That expires next week. No building permit's been applied for. All of those things could have been addressed up until this point. I do know that Mr. Musto has another permit. He has another house within the last 12 months, since the variance was granted, that he's acquired and renovated, and I believe is close to finishing, less than a block from here. So he said the ability and the funds to work on other projects that he's chose to. I know he's working in other towns. The board can certainly ask him those questions. So to me, the, what the board granted him was basically a gift. It was a new variance on an old variance. And to me, it's a level of disrespect to the board to not execute that variance in a timely manner within, you know, the timeframe that 48 allows. And six months is the maximum period that can, the variance can be extended. So I think to the chairman's point, six months is an awful long time, even to just get a building permit. It shouldn't take that long if he's actually committed to doing the work. So I trust the board to make an informed decision, but I would, if I had to say, I would suggest that they keep it on a very short leash.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak on this matter? Mr. Musto, come on up, you heard this, and what I like to know is accusations have been made that one of your contractors used electricity, which could be theft of adjoining property.
For the record, the fence that, Mrs. Corte-Parche, you're talking?
I'm not worried about the fence, I'm talking about the electricity that was used.
I didn't give him permission to use Mrs. Corte-Parche's, Mrs. Corte-Parche's electricity.
But you're the owner, you're the supervisor of the project?
I was not there the day he took that liberty upon himself to use her electricity. But for the record, we, the fence we put up was in need, was in severe need of repair. The old fence was in severe need of repair. It's against the trees, the trees are pushing on the fence, the fence was leaning. Mrs. Corte-Parche asked me to replace the fence, which we did. And it was not done in an unsatisfactory manner.
All right, anything else?
As far as what the zoning official just said, this is a new variance. Had things gone differently, I did acquire a house within a short distance from this building, was for the benefit of my son, who's now living there. And that's why, and I was, that project is complete. So the only thing that's before the board is this project, 241 Pleasant Street. I'm asking for an extension due to financial hardship. If you want to limit it to three months, that would allow me time to get the permit, that would be acceptable as well.
I'm smiling because I sat on that decision at our first meeting. The purpose of the addition was for your son. Did you hear the end of there?
No, that's correct. Based on the original plan that was submitted, that the variance was issued for back on October, 2019.
May 23, the very, we had two hearings on that matter, and the very first hearing, that was part of your statement. But I'm glad your son, you found a home for your son.
Well, he's there now.
Oh, glad, glad with that. Any further questions from any members of the board, from Mr. Musto? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing, and then we'll have to take the motion. So motion has been made by Matt, and the second by Rachel, to close the public hearing. Joanne, to close the public hearing?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Close the public hearing. Matt?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Yes, the public hearing is closed. What are the wishes of the board?
I think six months is definitely too long. I think that, as you said, Mr. Chairman, in reality, he could pull a building permit in two weeks. And so I think if we're going to grant this, it should be severely limited, given that he's already had a couple of extensions, and so that's my thought.
Any other thoughts from any other members?
I just thought the building commissioner's reminder of the statutory tolling during COVID was a helpful reminder that I had forgotten, because it was substantially longer than the standard statutory period. And since 2019, the opponent has been pursuing this project and has yet to commence work on either of the granted variances. You know, it was granted, he was entitled to do that under the timeline. He was entitled to pursue it, and he hasn't. And particularly, given both that history and my belief that the variance was not properly voted on to begin with, I would not be in favor of any extension.
Thank you. Anyone else want to comment on it?
Yeah, no, it doesn't seem that the applicant has necessarily even taken the steps that could have been taken within the last year. It doesn't sound like the designs are necessarily even ready to go yet. I'm not sure that, you know, an additional, even three months, would necessarily spur action, given the timeframe that we've already operated on. And I mean, it is functioning as a home now. I'm trying to think of if we don't grant this, and the project doesn't go through sort of like the impacts to the neighborhood, but it is still a functioning residential property, and I'm not sure that it would be necessarily more detrimental if, you know, a second structure wasn't placed there, as had been proposed a couple of times. So I'm not feeling inclined to pass the extension, because I'm not sure that it would necessarily yield different results than we had already previously seen.
Joanne, any?
I think I'm kind of of a similar mind, but Dan, I'd be open to a shorter extension, given the history here, if there's reason to.
Well, I guess now we have to put that in form of a motion. Does anyone want to make a motion to deny or to give them a very short window, say 60 days? So it could be one or the other. I have no particular, I could vote for either one of them, so I'll leave it at that. So we just need a motion, and the second, we'll take the vote.
I'll make a motion that would extend for 60 days.
Go ahead.
If, if a permit has not been pulled, there are no further extensions, and, you know, the game is over.
That's correct, yeah. So a motion's been made to extend the, the variance, that was a variance, correct? Eric, that was a variance, or a special permit?
It's variance.
That was a variance. So to extend the variance granted at our September meeting and recorded in October 23, the Registry of Deeds, to extend 60 days, that's, motion's been made by matters, or a second?
A second.
It's been seconded by Joanne. I'll call the vote. Joanne on the motion?
Yes.
Shannon on the motion?
No.
Rachel on the motion?
No.
Matt on the motion?
Yes.
And I vote yes, and it's only a majority needed, correct, for that? Or is that a supermajority?
I actually don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
I'm gonna find out and get back to you later on this meeting.
I think that it is a supermajority needed.
I thought so as well.
Okay, we'll check that. If a supermajority is needed, the motion fails. And as stated that by both Rachel and Shannon, it would not cause any detriment to the, to the town by taking that vote. We will follow up with the town council on that vote. There's Mr. DeLuca there. Could you ask Mr. DeLuca to come in, please? Sorry to put you on the spot, Dave. We have a question regarding an extension on a variance. The vote was three to two. Is four votes needed on an extension on a variance?
I don't think so. I think for a variance that's already been granted, right? You're looking to extend, so it's not an original grant.
Okay.
For a supermajority to be replied.
Right.
No, this is just to extend it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Musto, you have 60 days to pull your permit and get your project going.
Thank you very much.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. DeLuca.
Thank you.
And for the record, that was Dave DeLuca, town council. Okay, the next round before us is case 2024-23, 596 Providence Turnpike. I will read the public notice that appeared in the Noah record. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals of the Town of Noah will hold a public hearing on October 22, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. on the request of David Spiegel regarding property located at 596 Boston Providence Turnpike, Noah, Mass. 02062, in the single residence zoning district. The hearing will be held at the Noah Senior Center, 275 Prospect Street, Noah, Mass. 02062. It will also be available for remote participation via Google Meet. This application requests a special permit under section 3.1.5, Table of Uses K1 and 3.1.6, footnote 9, for accessory parking on a lot in a residential district, which is accessory to a non-residential use in the same lot. Any zoning relief that may be required in adherence to the Noah zoning bylaw shall be considered by the board. Interested persons are encouraged to attend the hearing and make their views known to the board. Plans are on file with this application in the office of the Zoning Board of Appeals and may be requested by emailing comdev@noahma.gov Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Is the applicant here, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chairmembers of the board. Brian, I'll be there for the applicant.
Good evening, Councilor.
Mr. Chair, thank you very much for reading what we're seeking a special permit for. Again, that would be section 3.1.5 for accessory parking in a residential district. I submitted a rather lengthy APED page memorandum at the request of the board that I think covered a lot of the issues that I ordinarily would stand here and discuss. I'm certainly mindful of the fact that there's a lot of members of the public here to comment, so I certainly don't want to belabor my presentation by repeating nearly what is in my memorandum. I am joined by Matt Smith of Noah Engineering, who I think ran to the restroom, and Kate O'Neil of Enterprise Holdings, who might also chime in with additional information that might be relevant to the board's consideration. And again, trying to avoid repeating what's in my memorandum, I think it's important to sort of go through the history of this lot and this application in its various forms. This property goes, as many lots along Route 1 were, sort of straddling the line between residential and commercial uses along the Route 1 corridor. This was one of many parcels that was rezoned in the new Boston Providence Highway District in the larger Route 1 rezoning effort in 2020 to 2021. At that time, there was an application for a site plan for the, what I'm going to refer to as the Enterprise parcel, which is the property where the Enterprise Rent-A-Car is currently operating. With respect to this vacant parcel, which is how I'm going to refer to the property that's at issue tonight, at that time, that was not part of the site plan review. And one thing that I'm going to attempt to do during my time up here, rather than repeat what's in the memorandum, is try to address some of the concerns of the neighbors and the various letters that you received that I had the chance to review in advance. And I think that one of the implications of some of those letters is that somehow this vacant parcel was not included in the larger site plan as part of some sort of bait and switch effort in order to apply for some segments of parking and apply for other segments of parking later. And I can attest from my own personal knowledge that that's simply not the case. The reason that this vacant parcel was not included in that original site plan is because at the time, there were negotiations ongoing to purchase. If you see one of the cutouts on this property, on this map right here, it's a town-owned parcel, and there were negotiations between the applicant and the town to purchase that parcel to include it as part of what applications before you this evening. Those efforts did not result in the applicant purchasing the parcel, so then an application is made to the planning board for a major project special permit for the addition of 144 spaces on this vacant parcel. Before the planning board, there was some debate amongst the applicant and the members of the board and the interested members of the public with respect to a footnote 12, which is on the Table of Uses, that indicates that for the Boston Providence Highway District, open lot storage cannot be within 100 feet of Route 1. And at the time, the intention was to park vehicles for sale in this area, because Enterprise's use of the Enterprise parcel, its primary use is for the rental of vehicles, and its accessory use is used car sales. And the intention of these parking spaces was to place the used car sale cars, and that would therefore be open lot storage. And the footnote 12 indicated that that could not happen within 100 feet of Route 1. And there was some debate about whether or not this property was subject to that, because it was 100 feet away from the exit ramp, but not 100 feet away from Route 1 proper. That results in a 3-2 denial of the major project special permit, which has been appealed to the land court. And during the process of that being appealed to the land court, the applicant and the planning board were engaged in negotiations to reorient the parking, reduce the parking in a manner that would make it more consistent with footnote 12. And in the middle of that process, there is a special town meeting vote that zones the Enterprise lot and the vacant lot back into the S residence district. And that's an effort that's spearheaded by some of the interested community members that you'll hear from this evening. So as a result of that, the application before the planning board is somewhat forming flux, because at the time, there needs to be approval from the Attorney General in order to ascertain whether or not the zoning amendment that's been voted on is valid and whether or not it's going to stand. So there's a long, prolonged wait for that. The applicant having filed an appeal of that zoning amendment, indicating that it's, arguing that it's spot zoning, which is zoning that targets a particular lot. After the Attorney General approves that zoning change and reviewing the bylaws, now that the property is back in the residence district, the 100-foot rule that I referenced with respect to the Boston Providence Highway District no longer applies, and that is how the application is before you this evening. It's solely a result of that rezoning of the property back into the S district, which allows for this plan to have the parking located within 100 feet of Route 1 and also applying as accessory parking. And there are some key differences between this plan and the plan that was before the planning board that I want to elaborate on. The first is that the original plan for the major project special permit was for 144 parking spaces. And the intention was to park vehicles for sale on this lot, which would render it to be open lot storage. This application seeks 99 parking spaces, as opposed to 144, and the intention is quite different. Because this is accessory parking, the cars that would be parked on this lot are for customers of the Enterprise business, are for visitors to the Enterprise lot, and they're for the storage of cars for rent. And the intention would be that the cars for, the used cars for sale would be parked on the Enterprise lot, the parking for which has already been improved by the site plan that I referenced earlier. So this is, in essence, an entirely different application than that which came before, both because it's structurally different and also because the zoning with respect to this lot has changed substantially since the application before the planning board several years ago. And I think that that's important to note. And I think that that's important to note, because I think there's an implication in some of the documents that you received, the letters, that the applicant's attempting to do some sort of end around beyond the Planning Board's decision, beyond the rezoning. I think that it's quite the opposite. Rather than, you know, engage in litigation with the town with respect to the Planning Board decision and the rezoning, we're instead before this board, seeking the relief that we're seeking this evening, in an effort, just as the applicant was doing at the time with the Planning Board, in an effort to get this application approved in a manner that, in this case now, the zoning board, previously the Planning Board, deems to be within their guidelines. And for the reasons that I indicated in my memorandum, which I'm happy to elaborate on further, we believe that it does meet the special permit criteria, particularly because of the very awkward change that's happened in the zoning of this lot. The applicant's now left with a lot that's immediately adjacent to a business that's zoned in the residential district. And there's, it is an extreme limit on our ability to develop the property consistent with what would ordinarily be in the residential district, because it's immediately adjacent to this Enterprise lot. It makes it extremely awkward. And in reviewing the Table of Uses with respect to what's allowed in the single-residence district, of course, it's single-residence homes, there's also under Section B in the Table of Uses, there's some other, maybe not business uses, but a childcare center, for instance, a library, religious use, and single-family homes. And particularly when the Enterprise property, the Enterprise lot, again, is located right there, it makes it essentially impossible to develop the property for anything other than what it was intended to be. And again, I think part of the board's task is to compare what we're asking for this evening and also what could be done as a matter of right and whether or not what could be done as a matter of right compared to this is substantially more detrimental. And I think that particularly in this case, given the constraints that are on the development of this property, what we're asking for is not substantially more detrimental, particularly when, for instance, a childcare center would involve a lot more circulation than these parking spaces would. And I think, on my final note with respect to my introduction, I think that in reviewing the comments of the various neighbors that have submitted letters to the board, I'm struck by the general theme being the angst over losing the forested area that's currently on this lot. And I think that with respect to that, first, no matter how this property's developed, the loss of that green space, to some extent, is inevitable. Any development of this property is going to result in the loss of those trees that you've read about in the letters. But I think with respect to this application, and Matt Smith will present the plan to the board, because I know it's new to this board, this plan preserves far more green space than other applications would. And that's because of the rezoning of this property the way that it has been and because of the previous efforts with the Planning Board. One of the challenges was, in orienting the parking as far away from Route 1 as possible to try to comply with the 100-foot rule, that limited the amount of green space that could be preserved in the area closest to the residential neighborhood. And now, as a result of this rezoning, with the parking being able to be shifted towards Route 1, now having been alleviated of the 100-foot restriction, as you can see from the plan from here and as Matt will elaborate on, there's substantially more green space than would otherwise be preserved by another application to use this parcel. So, for those reasons and for the reasons in my memorandum, we submit that this application does meet the special permit criteria. And I'm happy to answer any questions that the board has. Unfortunately, over the board, Matt Smith to present the point.
Okay, so the Enterprise lot is now single-family. Is that what you're saying?
I believe that's the case, yes.
All right, we've got a lot before us, but does anyone at this point have any questions for the council?
I had one.
Go ahead.
One distinction that you made in the presentation was what was before the Planning Board, which obviously we don't have that material in front of us, was that the vehicles would be for sale, and that is the distinction that renders it an open lot. And that with this proposal, with the vehicles being for rent, it's outside the definition of open lot. Can you tell me how to get there? I have open lot storage as a storage of goods, equipment, materials, supplies, tools, or any other commodity on a lot open to the air, not within a weather tight building or structure. Should I be looking at some other section that's particular to vehicles? Because I'm not seeing the distinction of sale versus rental.
I think that you should be, but I see that we have the building inspector here this evening, so I imagine that he'll comment on that. So, rather than I attempt to fumble through the section of the bylaw that I have and answer that question, I think I would defer to him, because this application was subject to pre-application review, and that was one aspect of the application that was discussed. And I think that the key distinction is, I think to address sort of what I believe your question is getting at, is with respect to what's different about the Planning Board application, because this is accessory parking, it needs to support the principal use of the Enterprise lot. So, the reason that the cars originally were the cars for sale is because that was the intention of Enterprise. But now, with respect to it being accessory parking, it needs to be the parking that's accessory to the primary use of the Enterprise parcel, the primary use being rental. That's why the rental cars are being parked on this part of the block, as opposed to where they were going to be oriented before.
I see, okay.
That's the key distinction for the change with respect to the bylaw.
Okay, good. The building commissioner can remember my question.
Yeah, well, Matt, do you have anything for the council?
I just had a quick question before we get to the next part.
Sure.
I'm sure I'll have them all later. How many rental cars, on average, do you have on a daily basis currently?
That's an excellent question. And we have Kate O'Neil from Enterprise here to answer that, so I don't know if she's going to come up separately to Matt, or if you want her to come up and answer your question.
That's fine, just.
She's here for that question.
All right. And how many existing spaces do you have to accommodate the average daily number? Maybe I'm jumping the gun here, so why don't we move forward?
I would ask that Mr. Palatier, I'm sorry, do you understand? I do create some pressure, would you mind just?
Sure.
And then we'll go back to you, Councilor. Yep, thank you, sir.
Sure, Mr. Chairman. It essentially comes down to the difference between storage, open lot storage would be vehicles that are not privately owned. They're owned, or they're owned by the dealership or that party. They're not registered, they're not insured. They're not, they may sit there for six months, depending on how long it takes for somebody to come in and buy it, as opposed to traffic. Like, all the rental cars, all the rental cars are rented. They're registered, they're insured, they turn over. So, they're out on the road, they come back in, they're cleaned, then they're parked, as opposed to being stored. They're parked until the next person comes along to rent them. Just like the parties that work at Enterprise, those privately registered and insured vehicles, owned by someone else, they come there for a limited period of time, and then they leave, as opposed to storage, which drive up and down Route 1, the auto mile, and areas accessory to that. And you'll see open lot storage of vehicles. They're unregistered, no plates, stickers on the windows, not owned. Those aren't being parked, those are being stored. So, that's essentially the determination that I've made, along with Town Council and some of my other counterparts, that that's an accurate delineation between parking, which is, in this case, is accessory to the use, versus the storage. And I made that very clear, Mr. Almeida, that to say it's accessory parking, that's what it has to be used for, not the storage of vehicles. So, if I were to, if it were approved and I were to drive by and see unregistered, unplated vehicles stored on that property, that would constitute a zoning violation as open lot storage.
Yeah, thank you. That's helpful.
Thank you, sir.
I knew we'd answer better than I would, so.
Do you want to, anything else? Do you want to have Matt come up?
Anything else?
I'm sure all the questions for you. Thank you. Okay, Matt Smith from Norwood Engineering. I did the introduction for you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're presenting this plan that shows 99 spaces. And I know this is the first time that the ZVA has seen this plan, but I know there's a lot of people in the audience that were at the Planning Board meeting. So, I am going to present this, but also give a bit of a comparison as to how the design of this plan changed. What we did was we kept the parking as far away from the neighborhood as we can. This is the neighborhood on March Street, and this is the ramp coming to Route, the on-ramp to Route 1 North. So, we kept the parking as far as we could to our property line. And since we are changing the count from 144 to 99, we were able to eliminate a lot of the spaces that were down in this area. And if you look at this plan, I've drawn on, in dark green, the areas that do not need to have any grading. So, the existing education can stay in this area on the dark green. The light green is an area which will be, they'll have to do some earthwork to reshape the earth a little bit, but then it will be replanted. And so, when this is finished, there'll be 45% green space on the site. This is a lot of green space for our commercial property. The zoning allows for 25% green space. So, there is, there'll be, we designed more green space on this plan than is allowed in the zoning. I think I'm going to wrap up pretty quickly and open up the questions. But as far as the engineering details of this plan, we included all the things that we did when we went through the Town Department ask before, all of the drainage, stormwater management, infiltration, hydrant locations. A lot of the engineering work is very similar. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you want that detail, but I'm not going to go into it at this point in time. And we did submit a landscape plan by KB Turner Landscaping. And the landscaping along Route 1 is the same that was originally proposed. It's what's, it is the same count that's allowed or required in the previous zoning for the project. And so, those are the plantings that we'll do in this area. And again, we're keeping, we've designed the grading and designed the earthwork, so all of these dark green areas will not be touched, and we can keep the existing vegetation. So, at this point in time, I'd like to wrap up and open up to any questions that the board may have. And then later, through the chair, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board has.
Are there any questions for Matt Smith from Norwood Engineering, for many members of the board? Yes, go ahead, John.
I noticed there's an easement on there for some gas utility. Could you speak a little bit about that?
Yes, there is. There's an easement for a gas utility that goes in this location. It, we've shown the location of pipe, and we've shown the location of the easement. And we've designed this plan so there will be no cars parked on the actual gas pipe and the, on the easement. And there'll be access, if there's any repairs in this area, there would never be any cars parked on top of that. But there is, there is a gas, a gas line on the property. This is the gas line that goes through a good part of Norwood. This ends up along Route 1. I know that it goes through a lot of the dealerships along Route 1, including Subaru dealerships. So, it's a gas line that exists in Norwood and exists on a lot of commercial sites.
And just as a follow-up, from an engineering perspective, is there any concern about paving over that pipe? I presume it exists elsewhere in the town as well?
Yes, it does. There's plenty of places where you do pave over the pipe, and that's been done a number of times. The concern is to, the preference is to not have any cars parked there. So, if there are any, anything that needed to be done, you obviously, you would move any cars if you had to, but we made sure that there weren't any cars parked. But paving, yes, but parking, no.
Any more questions for Matt?
On the landscape plan, and it's shown on the other one, this area right here, that's Algonquin red, what is that?
It's a wetland.
A wetland, okay.
Yes, it is a wetland. And when we went through the process the last time, we went to the Conservation Commission, and they will grant an order of conditions. We'll have to go back to the Kong Kong again, either for a new permit or modification of the decision.
And then, the other question I see in the note on the proposed site plan, in a couple of areas, it says no excavation activities within the Algonquin right-of-way between November 1 and April 15. Can you just elaborate why that condition is placed there? I'm assuming it's seasonal?
Yes, yes, it is a seasonal requirement. We contacted Algonquin when we went through the last process, had a lot of correspondence back and forth. They had their design criteria, their recommendations, and so those dates come from along.
Okay, thank you. And then, yeah, in terms of, it sounds like you've been coordinating with the utility, but in terms of the depths, there's no concerns around, obviously, like, who's going to be trees removed and that type of thing, like the depth of the utility? Are you supporting it in place at all? Or are you far enough from where your work ends and where the utility lies that we're not worried about construction phase?
You're talking about the gas line? Yes, it's going to stay in place. It will, the dirt will be, we won't excavate below the pipe. We will, the work will go above the pipe. So, no change to the pipe, it will stay.
Should we hold questions that I've never asked, based on Enterprise, then?
Yeah. Go ahead, Councilor.
I just wanted to offer one comment on the gas line, while it was a live issue.
Yes.
While we were before the Planning Board, we obtained approval from Algonquin Interstate with respect to this work. One of the, I think the meeting before the vote, the meeting was continued in order to allow us to obtain that approval, and it wasn't taken. And they deemed the work was sufficiently safe.
Is there anyone else from your team that wants to speak?
I think Kate O'Neil, perhaps we could comment on Mr. Rudio's question?
Yeah, no relation at all.
Hello, Kate O'Neil from Enterprise Rent-A-Car. Did you have a question that you wanted me to address first? Or?
Yeah, how many cars, on average, on a daily basis, would you say that you have on site for rental?
I wouldn't know an exact number.
Number?
I'm not 100% honest. I mean, at the end of the day, our goal isn't to have cars on the ground. If our rental cars are on the ground and on the road, they're making money. If our rental cars are on the ground and on the road, they make money. But yeah, so I don't have like an exact number.
How many existing spaces do you have to accommodate the cars that you have on the grounds on a daily basis for rental?
Right now, car rental is 36 spots, I believe.
I'm sorry, I don't have those numbers yet.
I think, I would have to double check, but I'm fairly certain that's what it is.
36?
Yeah, yeah. So I just wanted to give like a brief kind of operational synopsis, just so you guys understand our side of the business. So Enterprise is a family-owned company. We've been owned by the same family since we opened in 57, 1957. We have two locations in Norwood. It is a hot market for us with all the car dealerships, body shops, et cetera. We've been operating the two business lines here for quite some time. And both of them really just have kind of outgrown the space gap. And from an operational standpoint, this parking lot definitely is necessary for us to continue to operate and grow in the town of Norwood. Does anyone else have any questions?
Go ahead if you have some questions there.
Yeah, I guess I'm similar to the original line of questioning. So it looks like 99 spaces are being requested for the combination of employees, visitors, and then rental spaces. So I'm just curious to know like how you generated, like, you know, the number 99. Is it, you know, how many employees do you have coming to this site? And are there opportunities to either scale that back if there's concerns? But I guess how did we get to 99 spaces on this particular lot? And how many spaces do you currently have on the Enterprise lot where you're operating down?
I think I'll field that question because that determination was in fokander. The limit for a major project special permit is a net addition of 100 spaces. So given that now that the property is rezoned residential, there's the opportunity to come before this board to get a special permit. The idea was not to have to obtain a special permit from this board for the use for the accessory parking and then go before the planning board for site plan review, which I believe we'll have to do anyway, and also seek a major project special permit. In an ideal world, Enterprise would be asking for the same 144 spots that they asked for initially at the planning board. But the 99 spaces was reached as part of, again, those negotiations with the planning board during the first appeal of the planning board's decision. And we sort of stuck with that number on this application. So it's certainly not an enterprise operational decision to cap it at the 99 spaces. It's purely a decision based on what the zoning allows.
And so how was 144 derived? I'm just trying to get a sense of like what is your actual need for parking across the two, I guess we'll call them parcels? And how does that parking sort of proportionally divide among visitors, employees, sales, and rentals?
So again, I don't have like an exact number for like car rental, car sales. We just have outgrown the space that we have. And it seems that this falls under the permitting guidelines, so that's what we're going for.
So you're more like this is a number for future proofing? Maybe you don't need it today, but?
No, we have outgrown the parking lot that we have today. So yeah, we do, yeah.
And if I may, the 144 came about from a different design criteria. We were trying to get permits for storage of automobiles. And when I designed the previous plan, I was able, I designed the maximum amount of spaces, given the restrictions, mainly the 30-foot buffers that was part of the Boston Province Highway District design. So I took all of the design constraints, designed as many spaces as that I could design, and ended up with a 144. So that's where the 144 came from. But again, it was a different, we were trying to find as many storage spaces as we can within the regulations. And then now we're at 99. So that's where the 144 came from.
Just a point of information for the members. The Enterprise lot, according to Norwood Engineering Plan, has 84 spaces on it, not 36. So now you're asking us to add 99 to the 84. I was by there today. There was, there was about 20 spots open, so just my observation today. And then off of the plan, I did my math, there's 84 spots on the Enterprise lot. You can check your own work if you like.
No, no, I absolutely trust you, Mr. Chair. But the other thought I had was that the original special permit for the Enterprise building, the permit lists how many spots are allowable. So that data is right there. I believe you, sir. I don't have that right in front of me, but I probably got that.
The statement was 36. I just wanted to correct that for the record.
I'm sorry, sorry.
The statement that was made by Ms. O'Neil was 36 spots, but it's 84 on the Enterprise lot site.
I think she might have been talking about how many rental cars she had rather than total.
The question was asked how many rental cars they have. So it's 36 rental cars. And then I think it's maybe 50 car sale spots and then two handicaps. Yeah, something like that. But 36 was specifically for car rental.
Okay, so that's, okay, thank you. That's helpful.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I just had an operational question, if you would mind.
Yes, go ahead.
Just operationally, can you walk through, like, the rental process? Because in my mind, it just seems to be a heavier use that you have, like, users coming in, picking up the keys, walking to wherever the vehicle is located, pushing your button to figure out which car is beeping, and then going to that car. Can you just kind of walk through the rental process and how this lot would actually be used by your customers?
So the process that you described, like beeping to find your car, that's definitely more like an airport site. At the Home City sites, you know, we actually, we pride ourselves on customer service. So it's very much, we walk you out to the car, we walk around the car with you, do the contract. In this particular location, like a lot of our customers are picked up and dropped off at the car dealerships. Or we deliver a lot of vehicles directly to the car dealership. We meet them there with a tablet. And then at the end of the rental, they can actually leave the vehicle at the dealership, the body shop as well. So like most of the traffic coming on and off is us moving our vehicles out to kind of serve customers.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
And to that point, what are the hours of operation?
I have them written down. Car sales is Monday to Friday, 10 to 8. Saturday, 10 to 6, closed on Sundays. Daily rental is 8 to 5, Monday to Friday. Saturday, 9 to 1, closed on Sundays.
Thank you very much.
And how many, how many, how many full-time employees do you have?
I do not have that number off the top of my head.
It sounds like you don't have much need for client parking, based upon what you just said. And so you've got, you've got some need, whatever it might be, for employee parking. And everything else is?
The car rentals and the car sales cars, yeah, yeah. Yeah, even like if a customer is coming to your lot to get a rental car, most of them get dropped off and picked up. Like if their car, if a personal person's car is parked there, it's typically while they're doing the transaction. And then the person that's renting the car leaves and the person that dropped them off leaves, so.
So in theory, given the numbers that you've given us, you would in fact have 125 rental cars on site?
I hope not, but we do prepare for, you know, a certain percentage of our cars have to go to body shops, dealerships, check engine lights. You know, if we have a car that we meet, you know, a couple of days in advance, it might, you know, if the reservation's on a Friday, maybe Tuesday, we start getting those cars ready, so.
So it just seems to me that you're, and maybe you're planning for 10 years down the road when you?
We are, we're there for 20 years.
Is there any, is there any leeway here to diminish the number of cars, which would obviously have significant impact for all of these folks sitting here?
I believe the plan that we're presenting is there. I think that we started at a 144 number, we're down to 99. That's a pretty big concession on our part. And, you know, we're a business, just trying to do business in Norwood, so.
And I guess related to your business feasibility, so it sounds like you have 84 spaces now for sales, rental, and employee and visitors. I guess what are the impacts to not getting these additional spaces? Are you not selling car? Like I'm just trying to figure out, like what happens to your business model there if this additional parking is not available to you, for example?
That is a very good question. That is definitely not up to me. Our corporate office is in St. Louis and it would be a lot of conversations back and forth with them to figure out if a business line closes, if, you know, there's a way to somehow make this work down the line for us. But yeah, I don't have that answer to that.
And just one question. On your other location in Norwood, how many parking spaces do you have there?
I don't know off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. Okay, thank you. Go ahead and then we're going to open this up, okay?
I just wanted to address, yeah, I don't mean to keep coming up. I just wanted to address Ms. Green's question. I had a fair bit of interaction with Enterprise Corporate with respect to being able to present this plan to you. It took a lot of convincing on my part to get them down from the 144 spaces to the 99. I can say that while Ms. O'Neil might not be here on behalf of Enterprise Corporate, able to speak for them, that in me speaking to them directly, they're convinced that they need this parking for this location to be viable. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this point, I'm going to open it up. Do anyone like to speak to this matter? Again, please state your name and address for the record. So just approach the podium if you'd like to speak on this matter.
Good evening, Stacy Crowe, 733 Napont Street, and Town Meeting Representative. So I only just recently came across a lot of this information relative to the development of the property and have lived in Norwood for about eight years. And I have to say that this particular sort of series of parcels, both the actual residents, single homeowners with their back lawns and trees, as well as the current properties that are covered with green space, offer a really nice respite as you're going along Route 1 and also the rotary, just in terms of offering some homes for animals, some green space, some color, and just a nice break from a lot of the commercial elements of Norwood. I was still part of Town Meeting back in March, went after a brief two-year respite from residential zoning, that this parcel was rezoned back to residential after a small stint in the Boston Province Parkway. I spent some time both on the Napont Street extension, visiting with the homeowners that immediately, but sort of what would be directly impacted as well as further down Norwood. And I presented to you all about 21 signatures. And universally, as we were talking to our neighbors, they, some had heard about this, many had not. All were pretty universally dismayed and sort of disgusted the idea of more parking along Route 1, eliminating the green space, encroaching more on the residential areas, and sort of eliminating this buffer from the commercial areas. And as you can see, sort of signed in opposition to this parking lot. Could the land be further developed for other purposes? Absolutely. That's not really what we're here for, but certainly is further development could be considered there. There would be opportunities to understand what that development would be and seek additional public comment on other purposes. But really universally, from everyone we spoke to, no one was in favor of eliminating the trees and adding more parking to this part of the town. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else like to come up? Yes, please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Gail Ladani, 580 Napont Street. I am a butter of the development. We have been fighting this for two years. We got it rezoned to residential because when it was turned, when it was swept up with the Boston Providence rezoning, that was during COVID, we were not notified by mail. There was a notification put in the paper that said 596, you know, Boston Providence Highway. We wouldn't have known what that was even if we read it. We've, we've gone through a lot to get here. We've, we've done everything we can to try to let it be known that we are in between, our street is between a rock and a hard place. We bought our homes knowing that the airport was there. We also bought our homes knowing that we had protected wooded area, residential zone, landlocked. We knew that maybe a house could go in there if one of our neighbors bought it on that side. But to have a parking lot put in there, our property values will drop. The lighting, I mean, we have the Cadillac dealership that's, lights go into our neighborhood. Now you're asking us to accept more lighting, asphalt. He can develop the property, but we don't want a parking lot there. It's not necessary. He has as many spaces as he could possibly need or want. He owns other properties. He owns, I don't know, 10, 12 properties throughout Norwood, commercial. He also owns the Sayre, I think the trampoline place. So we've given him plenty. He has plenty of parking. So we're just asking, you know, how many, how much longer do we have to fight for this? To protect our neighborhood? We need that buffer from Route 1. Our property values will drop, no question about it. I'm a real estate agent, I'm a real estate broker-owner. I have been a Realtor for 20 years. I can assure you that those homes that will have this parking lot behind them, their value will go down, no question. So you're hurting us. You're hurting, he's hurting us. He's not being a good neighbor to us. We don't want this. He doesn't need it. He wants it, but they don't need it. Enterprise just said, we're a family-owned business. We're a family-owned neighborhood. I've been there for 37 years. Some neighbors have been there for 60. We have to count for something. We're begging you. But that's my, that's what I'm saying, and I thank you for listening to me.
Thank you very much, thank you very much. Anyone else here that would like to come up to the podium? Just if you can't get up, so you can speak from there if you're having any difficulty.
Anyway, I have a couple of questions. Am I correct? My name is Donald Hale.
Thank you, sir.
583 Deconset Street. I have albeit, buy a small amount, a true a butter to the property, just for record. One question I have, have the members of the board, are they familiar with the materials that were sent through for you to read? At least you have our viewpoint on it and the history involved in it? That's good. One other point that I want to bring up, and that is that, I think it was 2019, when this first came up, I attended the meetings, I believe it was with the planning board. Correct me if I'm wrong on these details. But my recollection is that it was presented as a small building to accept rentals coming back in to be processed and then sent somewhere else. I spoke in favor of that because it seemed a reasonable use for that small piece of, I believe it was zoned business or whatever it was at the time. Certainly it was not zoned for residential property. And look what it has become. It was approved, as far as I know, for that sort of an application and not as an ongoing retail establishment for the resale of cars. That's one point. I think the last thing I need to say really is, the will of the citizens of the town of Norwood, as expressed by Town Meeting, was that this is not to fly by almost 5 to 1, 4.87 to 1 in Town Meeting. I'd like to leave it at that.
Thank you, sir. Yes, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Yvonne Monahan, 544 Napont Street, speaking on behalf of myself and my husband Chris Nickerson and our two children. And my 16-year-old boy wanted to be here tonight to speak as well because we would like to speak also on behalf of all the wildlife that have been disrupted by the current Enterprise parcel and what would likely result in the new parcel also. We had two owls that used to live in the tree that was in our driveway. And since the current Enterprise being built, those two owls have not returned. Those two owls had come for 20-plus years, according to the old residents. This is very disheartening. Also, the pond at the back of our garden has now shared with our neighbors. The water levels have dropped significantly in the past few years due to the construction that has happened both to the north, south, and east of our house. We're down at the very end and we are facing front-on to the Enterprise property. What I would like to also have you consider is that even though the drop-offs, they shared with the working hours, those lights are on 24/7. They blare straight into our sitting room on one side, my two kids' bedrooms, and from the back with the other parcel that was built during COVID as well, those are also into our bedrooms. So we are surrounded by light down there too. And this new parking light would put that on my neighbors. It got slipped by us during COVID, but I don't want that on my neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Good evening, Lee Kreveling, 605 Napont Street. I'm speaking for myself, my husband, and again, my, also my two children who are 15 and 8 years old. I think we've agreed that Enterprise doesn't need these spaces currently. I would say that the chairman's notion that there's always empty spaces currently is true every day. I travel that road every single day, at least five to seven times. So we're looking at the future, and that was what was stated by Enterprise. They're thinking about their future. I ask that this group does think about the future. I join with my neighbors in everything that's been said about that space. But additionally, I would like to point out that there's no determination that Enterprise will forever inhabit that space at the end. And when you take those trees down and you put that parking structure there, that, it's it, it's over. And that will be true for the future, whether Enterprise continues to inhabit that building or it becomes vacant. My husband and I bought our house, it was a stretch for us. We love our neighborhood, we've made an addition onto it. Came before the board in order to do that. And we believe in doing things the way that they should be done. I do not believe in any way, shape, or form that this process from 2019 through now has followed that. And I urge you to think about the future and what that will mean, not only for our neighborhood, but for all of Norwood. I think it was very clear from the Town Meeting what the preference was for this town.
Thank you.
My name is Catherine Hale, and I live on 583 Napont Street. I've been living in Norwood for over 80 years. And I just don't understand this because it's only going to deteriorate the town of Norwood. People that go down the ramp and want to Route 1, they're able to see, you know, these trees instead of asphalt. And it's, it's not going to do anything for the town of Norwood because it's only going to fill their coffers. It doesn't give Norwood any money. And it's not going to provide jobs either. And it's a sliver of land behind our houses. And it's a sliver of land behind our houses, and we're, the trees that are there, we're able to look out and see a little bit of nature, it adds so much pleasure. You've heard the expression, give them an inch, they'll take a mile? Well, it's already started, and I'm hoping that your judgment will allow us to keep things as they are. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Craig Reiki, 585 Napontet Street, and I'm a town meeting member. Couple corrections, it's not a gas line, it's a pipeline, which is a, it's been deemed by the federal government to be a high consequence area, meaning that if they screw up, dig it, there's going to be a lot of parties. The other correction was that when they dealt with the planning board the last time, they said they'd have 20 to 25 employees, so they knew that then. And that's the total amount, total amount of employees not at one time. Right now, they're basing their application on the fact that under the accessory's use and the definition is activity incidental to and located on the same premise. Now incidental means not a major part of. And I would contend 99 more parking spots is not incidental, but more integral. It's, they basically said during the planning board that they could not make a go of this without that. So that's not incidental, and the only way they can go into a residential area is if it's incidental. It's a major part of their business. When they came before you back in 2020, they were looking for a building and storage. And they went to the planning board, they were looking for storage, and that got approved for that Phase 1. And then town meeting, before I was a member, let it get tied into the BPH zone, and that lasted about two years. And at that point, the planning board shut it down. They disapproved it when it was commercial. And now before you, it's residential, as it has been, except for those two years, for well over 70 years. There's no clear definition, if you go into the definitions of what accessory parking really is, there's accessories, accessory use, parking, there is a clear definition of open space, oh, excuse me, open lot storage, and this meets it. And open lot space is mentioned in numerous sections of zoning bylaws, not just Table K. In Table, Section D for retail uses, vehicles in open lot storage is disallowed in Zone S. Other types of sales is disallowed, open lot sales is disallowed in Zone S. For wholesale business and storage, it's disallowed in Zone S. For open lot storage specifically for vehicles, it's disallowed in Zone S. For vehicle services, it's disallowed in Zone S. For storage of vehicles, for sale/lease, it's disallowed in Zone S. Accessory uses, if it's open lot storage where it's under 25% of the area, it's disallowed. If it's over, it's disallowed. For rent or leasing other vehicles, it's disallowed. So on numerous sections, it's disallowed for residential. And I just think those outweigh any kind of ask for, they think they might have found. Thank you.
Just to that point, sir, I'm going to ask the town council when everyone gets finished speaking to explain what the ask is and what is allowed because it's a couple of different things, but I'll leave that for the town council so there's a better understanding of it. Thank you.
It's complicated.
That's why we have the town council.
But again, it's, the important point, the important point is, this was returned back to residential by 80% of the town meeting members.
I understand that.
Overwhelmingly.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Anyone else here who would like to speak? Can I just, yes, ma'am?
Euphoden, 563 Napontet. There have been a number of misrepresentations and outright untruths over the past many, many years and tonight by Mr. Elmeida about this project, but one I want to focus on, and that is that he represented to you that the reason the planning board defeated this for the first time was just because of the footnote and the 100-foot buffer, which is now not the case. That is not why this was struck down. That was discussed, the 100-foot buffer was certainly a topic of conversation, but ultimately the special permit, all the criteria that we put in our, in our letter, ultimately this came down to the question of, does this hinder, hinder the town of Norwood and its residents more than it helps the applicant? And that is the special permit overall question. And those of you who were at town meeting and saw 150 more people stand up and say and feel very passionately that this was not in the town's best interest, weighed against this, and that is what this came down to, is those special permit criteria and not this footnote. The footnote was discussed, that was not the main thing, and that, that really what we're here and what you see, all of these people, all the people online, we're here because on balance, this is not good for the town of Norwood as compared to whatever negligible benefit, if any, there would be to the town, so.
Thank you very much.
Dan Drummy, 619 Napontet Street. My backyard is overlooking the Cadillac dealership. I've been there for over 10 years, and they're a good neighbor, but at nighttime, the lights come in from them and the security lights come in. They're supposed to be turned off at 9 o'clock, but the lights do come on into our windows at 2:00 in the morning. Car alarms go off, and what I see down the street now is going to be similar to that. There'll be promises made tonight about what they do for lighting and trees and noise, but 10 years from now, that'll all be forgotten, and they'll be living down there with the lights shutting in and the car alarms going off. We could stop it now, or, you know, put an ad to it or what. So, all right. Thanks.
Anyone else here in the audience? Yes, sir. Please come up, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jack Taylor, 11 Monroe Street. I'm a town meeting member. Recently, I stood in support of my neighbors at town meeting. This evening, I stand here before you in support of my neighbors, and I ask you, please, please support our neighbors.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Anyone else before I go to the go-to meeting? Okay, we're going to go to a go-to meeting. If there's anyone to go to a meeting that would like to address the board on this matter, please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Pamela Carpenter, house at Andreas. Have you, on your?
Thank you. Yes, I'd like to make a few comments, please. My name is Claudia Crisco Carpenter, and I take a somewhat of a different view than my neighbors with regard to Mr. Spiegel's proposal.
Excuse me, excuse me.
I'm 549 Napontet Street.
Thank you, thank you.
Which is the property most closely abutting enterprise. I've lived there for 43 years, and before I make my comment, I would just like to thank David Spiegel for the improvements that he has made on the commercial property that abuts my residence. I don't know if anybody recalls Reed's Radiator, just if you want to talk, you know, historically. There used to be, I used to watch employees relieve themselves because there were no bathroom facilities. There was a landscaping company that was also, that took residents on that property, and our street with no sidewalks and with many, many young children, supported 18-wheelers coming down 5:00 in the morning, idling until they could unload their, you know, their product. So David Spiegel has been very generous in improving the property. He even asked what we would like in terms of fencing to separate commercial from the residential and what had been proposed, you know, the typical wooden fencing, chain link fencing, all kinds of fencing. And one of the neighbors and I asked if he would consider composite, which is, you know, infinitely more expensive, but it's absolutely gorgeous. So he has done this, you know, been very reasonable. So enough said about that, but I just want to make a comment, you know, save the woods has always been a preference to all the neighbors, myself included. Okay, we're beyond that now, okay? We have to be quanted in a realistic way and in a manner that's less emotional, okay? It would be most unreasonable for us, you know, for the neighbors to expect that Mr. Spiegel allow the 1.83 acres for which he paid a significant sum of money to remain vacant, okay? It's, it's not realistic. You know, whether it's zoned commercial or residential, I'm certain he will devise a plan to utilize his land, and I would prefer that residential usage not be the choice, okay? He could put up houses behind our houses, and how would you access? Would we reopen Napontet Street? You know, I was the one instrumental in cul-de-sacking the street in 1986, okay? I put forth the engineering plans and the, you know, the detailed commentary, okay? So how are you going to get to those residences if you still chose to construct single-family dwellings? Are we going to open up the street and create, you know, extend to the road? So I'm trying to be less emotional and more realistic, okay? I, listen, I loved the Napontet Valley ice cream place, Simone Greenhouses. Most unfortunately, you know, those were turned into, you know, car dealerships. Life goes on, okay? He purchased the land, he did it in the appropriate manner, he's trying to work with all of us and preserve the greenery to the extent possible, and I don't understand why we're allowing other options to be considered that could be far more detrimental. And as far as animals, I'm the neighbor who feeds all of them, okay? I feed the deer, the turkey, I have an owl house, you know, I feed the birds, I feed everything, a fisher cat. I don't want to see those animals leave. I'm hoping that with the, with the extended buffer, that they will choose to stay. I don't know, but, you know, I just wanted to level set here.
Thank you.
And go from worse. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on go-to meeting that would like to address the board on this matter?
Can I speak again or no?
Anyone else on go-to meeting that would like to address the board? Speak again if you have something new, but if it's to rebut what that young lady said, no. But if you have something new to add, you can speak to it, but I'm not going to allow conversations back between because you disagree with the lady that just spoke.
Oh, no. I would like to correct something that she said.
Briefly, and if a dick crosses the line, I'm going to call you out of order, okay? So if you want to come up.
All right. Gail Ladani, 580 Napontet Street. I too was a part of getting that street cul-de-sac many, many, many years ago. Pam was not the only one. She referenced another neighbor who collaborated with her on that fence, who has since said she does not approve of this.
That neighbor's not here, so.
Oh, okay, all right, okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Hey, yes, sir?
Frank Adams, 3 Delap Road. I'm not in a butter, I don't necessarily have a dog in the fight, other than to say that as a town meeting member, I think the elected representatives of the town citizens were clear in their intent for the use of the land, and I don't think that should be disregarded. It should probably also be concerned with the fact that a parking lot isn't likely to generate any meaningful income for the town, however, the deterioration of the values of the homes is likely to go down, right? So probably net costs of the town and its citizens. That means Reed will all be subsidizing Mr. Spiegel's project here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, Ms. Taylor, you want to come up and state your name and address for the record?
Jean Farar Taylor, District 8. I'm a town meeting member. I wasn't going to speak, but it makes me angry because I sit at town meeting and I vote at town meeting, and I thought that when we voted, that we protected the neighborhood. Obviously, we didn't, and there's loopholes that were in it. When you are considering this, please take as much as you can into consideration as far as our drainage. I mean, I've lived in, I'm the third generation in Norwood, I've watched our town, and it's sad, what I watched, and I know we have to, we have to build, we have to move forward, legally, whatever you can come up with, the least amount of impact to this neighborhood, because I don't think even they would want a parking lot near them with the lights and everything else that goes with it. But he has a right, he owns property, and if I was sitting up there, I would be trying to find some way of saying no, but I know you are limited to what you can do.
Thank you.
As much as you can.
Thank you. We did receive some letters in opposition, and they're part of the record, I'll just read the names. Chris Reston, a town meeting member, District 8. Craig spoke earlier, we did receive your letter, Craig, thank you. Gail, we received, you did speak this evening, we did receive your letter. Janet Oganowski, 7 Big Colony Drive, Janet is not here, but we did receive her letter. Alton Hughes provided a letter. Valerie McGrath provided a letter in opposition. We did receive the Napontet Street Neighborhood Association letter of opposition, and it was signed by, it looks like 15, 15 neighbors, some of them spoke this evening, and we did receive this evening a petition of 21 residents, some of our duplicates from letters received and also from the Napontet Street Neighborhood Association. Mr. Jim, you had a woman over here. Oh, yes, have you, please, thank you, please approach the podium.
Hi, I'm Katie Neal Rizzo. I'm not in a butter. I'm a town meeting member, District 2. I often stand up at town meeting to speak to the community about gas leaks in town. I'd say it might not be an immediate threat to the gas line, but there are three known unfixed gas leaks in that area along Route 1 that have not been remedied. They've been, they've been known gas leaks for at least four to six years, so that's one consequence that I haven't heard spoken of tonight. When the property was first purchased, it was residential, and we moved over to a different zoning for a couple of years and moved back to residential. And if a business were to purchase that property with the assumption that they'd be able to get the area rezoned for whatever purpose they hope they could use it for, just seems like poor planning and poor business practice in my mind. You can't assume that you'll be able to coerce the town into rezoning it into what you'd like it to be. And... And finally, the green space, the look of Route One, the animals are not the only environmental concern. All along Route One is a known heat island where the heat coming off of the pavement increases the temperature in the area and decreases the quality of the air. So clearcutting all of those trees, it doesn't matter if you plant fifteen brand-new little trees, it's going to significantly increase the temperature in the area and decrease the quality of the air.
Thank you.
We do have one person as well with their, yeah, griefs.
Okay, recognize that person, please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you very much, this is James Greavesdale. I live at 600 Napont Street. One thing that came to light to me in this conversation was that apparently Mr. Spiegel owns, you know, the Launch property adjacent. And as I drive by that Launch property, it is quite a massive parking lot, you know, both on the sides and all the way front and side, all the way down to Access Road. It is never full, ever full. And I'm just curious, you know, would it not be a more efficient use of that existing parking lot, you know, for this use? Why would, you know, I know this is his business plans, but I just, I would love to hear more about this. Why would we have this empty parking lot sitting while we're trying to build another parking lot?
I'll let Mr. Almeida answer that, but I'm sure it's under the lease that Launch has that their negotiators shared them on a parking spot. But I'll have Mr. Almeida when he comes up to answer that. Thank you, sir. Have you spoken already?
I have, this is a different, this is about the spaces. And it's a question for Mr. Smith.
Okay, you have to approach the podium and ask you the question and go directly.
So, Mr. Smith, I have a question for Mr. Smith. When this was first brought back for the original enterprise parking lot before the planning board, Mr. Smith said specifically that if there were more parking spaces ever needed, he would not go into the neighborhood, that it would use, that the Launch parking lot would be used for additional spaces in the future down the line. So I would just like Mr. Smith to speak to what has changed there from that time.
Now, is that a question for you or is that for council?
Oh, I'd like to answer first and then.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't recall making that statement. I will say as a background, when we got the original building approved, we did use some of the spaces on the Launch lot adjacent to be part of the original building. And I know that there was some discussion as to what we would want to, if we would expand this way. At the time, I don't recall if David Spiegel owned this land. And second of all, we were talking about storage spaces, storage spaces. And at the time, it was residential and storage spaces were not allowed in residential. So I know there was some discussion as to what the plans were for expansion. I know that I talked, and part of it, that they had, at the time, they had not planned to expand, but there were different reasons for that. One was storage versus residential zone, one was, I'm not even sure that he owned it at the time. And then the thing I'd like to sum up with is that sometimes business circumstances change and people have different changes on their, on their business plan. And if they do have a change in the business plan, they have to come back to the board and ask for your approval. So this has come up a few times. People know exactly what date and what time within the tape that I made the statement. And I don't remember exactly what I said, but that's really the context as to when I made my statements.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I don't see anyone else. So, Mr. Almeida, you've got a lot of questions to answer. And then also, I want you to address what gives your group the right to ask for these under the zoning code and the accessory use. And if you can address that, and town council's here, and if town council or zoning enforcement officer see it differently, we'll, the last thing, the, so. So give us, under the zone, let's address that first. There's been a lot of things said, was not allowed, was allowed, how things changed. But give us your reasoning and why you can apply for this under the zoning code. You're going to be under watch for the eye of our town council.
Understood. So I think that this also goes to a question that one of the neighbors referenced with respect to what the definition of accessory use is. And in the memorandum that I provided to the board, that Section 11, and it has a definition of accessory use that I think that the previous speaker accurately summarized. But there is a parenthetical that I bolded in my memorandum that says "other than parking", which says that the, all the rest of the definition with respect to what accessory use is does not apply to parking. And the understanding is that anytime you have any use, you need parking for it. So parking is naturally accessory to pretty much any other use that you're doing with respect to any business. So moving past Section 11, the limits of accessory use don't apply when it's parking.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Jim.
Just to be clear, you're reading of the definition of accessory use, is that the first sentence does apply to parking? And the second sentence with that parenthetical, "other than parking", brings it out of the definition?
I think, if I'm reading, if I'm reading this in fairness, I think that that first sentence attempts to define the term. And then the remainder of that, the next sentence, two sentences, further clarifies the definition that's established in that first sentence. And I read it to mean that typically accessory use is incidental to and located on the same premises as a principal use conducted. Yes, I think, I think that's correct, and I think it applies to this project. But I think the second sentence modifies that to some extent to say that "other than", that limiting definition, uses shall only be considered accessory if they're functionally dependent on and operating in less than land area, et cetera, is not applicable to parking. So I think.
Yeah, the parenthetical applies to that second sentence.
Correct. And I think that second sentence is what establishes the definition that the neighbor had referenced that goes into the intensity of the use, I think, sort of based on, sort of the nature of parking. It's an exception because it's always accessory because every use under the zoning bylaw requires parking.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, a similar question. In that first sentence, it claims that the activity has to be on the same premises. And I know that you call a premises, I think, multiple contiguous lots. What I'm struggling with is that when you go to the 3.1.6 note nine, it specifically says that accessory parking needs to be on the same lot. So it's, I can't tell if that's contradicting itself or, so I don't know if you can speak to that or potentially town council can help out.
I think it's consistent, I think that sort of flows naturally where I was going next.
Okay.
With respect to, get to footnote nine.
Page thirty-one, if you're looking for it. Oh, I was looking at that.
Page twenty-six, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't hear that.
Yeah, I looked there. I wish it said change to PB.
Okay, this is complicated, so I do want to walk step by step. So I think the next step in the definition chain that we're going through is to define premises. And I certainly don't define it, this is taken from the bylaw. Premises is defined as one or more contiguous lots in the same ownership or use together with all the buildings or structures thereon. Because I think we need to get to premises before we get to lots. So with respect to this application, it's contiguous lots in the same ownership, one premises. Then to the next definition, the bylaws sort of define lots as a single contiguous parcel of land held in identical ownership throughout and defined by meets, bounds, or boundary lines in a recorded deed or on a recorded plan. So that's how we sort of make the connection from accessory use to premises and then to lots. And I think that's consistent with footnote nine that you referenced because it says it needs to serve a non-residential use located on the same lot. And that's where we sort of have a unique situation here where we have one premises, one lot, a commercial use in a property that's now residential, residential allowing the application for accessory parking. That's how we get to where we are today.
Town Council?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Attorney Dave DeLuca, Town Council. I've been listening to the presentations, all which are well-thought-out, sincere certainly. I have to tell you that we've spent a considerable amount of time on this request in different forums, from the land court to the AG's office to town meeting and now before your board. This application itself got considerable attention and vetting from the planning department, zoning enforcement officer. And I'm here to tell you to confirm that there is a legal pathway for this request. Just as it was explained earlier, there is in our bylaw the ability to pursue the accessory parking on this adjacent lot as the definitions have been presented to you. As with anything, when there's an action, there's a re-action. There was action taken to rezone this property from residential to commercial under the Boston Province Highway zoning from 2020. That presented certain challenges to the applicant. He made his request to the planning board and couldn't meet the hundred-foot setback that was required. The rezoning that was done in March of 2023, was it 24? It was as sincerely held as there was to rezone it as a, as a single-family residence. That created a different legal pathway for the applicant to come before you and make the request for accessory parking as it's been described to you. You have the difficult job of determining under the section relative to special permits whether it meets that special permit criteria, all of the incidentals. And let me remind you, and you know this, you have the ability to condition any approval that you make in order to mitigate or at least provide relief when you think it is appropriate. But again, I'd like to reiterate that this application got a considerable amount of attention from my office, from the zoning enforcement office, from the planning office. And this is the one narrow legal pathway that is available for you to consider on the merits.
Thank you, thank you. So just to the members, we do, it is before us legally, but it still has to meet the special permit criterias that we apply when we vote for these. But I just, thank you for that. So, Mr. Almeida, a lot of other questions that were brought up, so I'll give you the opportunity to address them as you see fit. And then we'll see where we go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did write down some notes on some of the comments that were made. I think I want to start with comments relative to the overwhelming majority of town meeting having rezoned this into the single-family residence district. It was only several years before that an overwhelming majority of the town meeting members voted to rezone this into the Boston Providence Highway District. And that was part of a larger Route One-wide rezoning effort in order to avoid situations exactly like this where we have inconsistency between residential properties and commercial properties abutting each other immediately on Route One. It was, well, I certainly acknowledge the frustration of the neighborhood that there was, there's no requirement to notify by mail with respect to a zoning change. I attended dozens of meetings in front of, I believe, this board, the selectmen, and the planning board, informational sessions held by the planning department discussing these changes. And I think that the reasons for that rezoning change were well-intentioned and those same reasons apply very much to this lot. And I think as town council just mentioned, this is just a different legal pathway to pursue the very same application just now as a result of the rezoning in a different form. And I do want to note with respect to the rezoning that occurred on this property, as part of the process to rezone any property, there's a legal requirement that the application go in front of the planning board for a town and also the board of selectmen for them to offer comment. The board of selectmen voted no. The town meeting should not undo the change of the Boston Providence Highway District back to the single residence district. And I think most notably, and I was in attendance that night, the very same planning board that voted to deny the major project special permit for the 144 spaces, they also voted unanimously no in favor of, let's keep it in the Boston Providence Highway District. And I think the reason for that is because while the will of town meeting is one thing, the law recognizes that the planning board and the board of selectmen should have some input into what the town-wide zoning scheme is, and particularly in this case where this was rezoned only two years after it had been flip-flopped back and forth. And I think that the planning board and selectmen were correct that it should have stayed in the PB-H district. But here we are, and we're arguing about the same sort of inconsistency that that district was meant to prevent. But I think as Pam Carpenter mentioned, any development of this property is going to involve in the loss of green space. It's just, it's just the simple reality of it. But I think as Matt Smith noted, this project keeps essentially double the amount of green spaces would be required with respect to any other development in this district. And that's significant, particularly when, I think to one neighbor's comment, it's particularly unfortunate when we eliminate mature trees and then plant younger trees to take their place. Based on the amount of undisturbed green space there, particularly in the area where the neighbors would be most affected, those mature trees are remaining in place. And I think that's a feature of this project that's simply not going to be available with anything else that's allowed as a matter of right. And I think implicitly, what the board's tasked with in looking at a special permit is weighing what could be done as a matter of right and then comparing it to this application and determining whether or not it's more substantially detrimental in this case. I submit that it's not. And if you bear with me, just want to make sure I don't miss anything that I wanted to address. And I think with respect to municipal services and that component of it, with respect to the fiscal impact, currently, the undeveloped parcel has almost no fiscal impact with respect to taxes. While I agree that typically parking is not a use that you look at for a fiscal benefit, it's far better than a vacant lot with respect to fiscal benefit. And in this case, again, just based on the awkward positioning of this lot and having been flip-flopped between zones essentially three times in five years, we're left in a position where there's really no other way to develop it. And the only way to do so would be essentially this application because it's somewhat infeasible to have single-family residences in this close proximity to a business. And to the neighbor's comment and to Matt Smith's comment about using the Launch spaces, that was actually the first thing that the planning department had us look into before in this pre-application process that town council described. Simply put, as the chair noted, the leases with those other businesses require us to keep a certain number of spaces allocated for them. And as Matt indicated, the spaces that we've used in the original Enterprise site plan and take advantage of the Launch spaces are the maximum number that we can utilize from that parcel. And while I, again, am quite convinced that developing this for single-family use would be feasible given Enterprise's location, the parking lot does have the advantage of not putting any additional strain on utilities, on the school district, around the resources of the town. So for all those reasons and for all the reasons that I stated in my memorandum, we believe that this does meet the special permit criteria. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Do you have any questions? Yeah.
Not true, who's the best person to answer this? In the landscape plan that you submitted, I noticed you show some planting along the highway. Are there any proposed improvements to the landscape in between the proposed parking and the neighborhood?
None on this plan. And what we did was we, as you can see, the green area will be existing vegetation that will, that will stay intact. So we were thinking that we would, by maximizing the amount of existing vegetation that we're going to keep, that would, that would be the best way to search.
Is there any question? Jean?
No, there's no questions.
Rachel?
No questions.
Yeah?
I just repeat the same question I asked earlier, which is, is there any way to eliminate some of these spaces? I just think that's, it's an overwhelming ask.
So I can feel that question because I most recently just talked to people less corporate about this. You know, as much as. But, you know, as much as Mr. Smith, in designing the parking lot, had designed it for 144 spaces just based on the residential requirements, whether that's based on the sort of the natural inclination for people to anchor on a number, or, you know, in my discussion with Enterprise, I believe it's just based on a sincerely held belief about how many spaces they need. Again, just even getting this application before you, I had to do a lot of legwork with Enterprise corporates and convince them that this was the best route to pursue.
David, you haven't given us any concrete evidence that you need that many spaces, because you haven't been able to tell us how many cars are there on an average day, how many spaces you use, how many employees there are. You haven't answered any of the questions that would allow you to make that conclusion.
Well, I think, I think the neighbors might have mentioned that at the previous planning board hearings, there were 25 employees. But your person couldn't tell us how many employees there are.
Question is, how many employees are there during your?
I've never heard of that.
Come on, step up, please. Please, thank you. The question is, how many employees are there Monday through Friday during your hours of operation?
I don't have an exact number. I do think like the total, like, we have hard-time and full-time employees. I don't, my office is not at that site, so I do not know.
But I went in there tomorrow morning at 10:00 to rent a car. How many people would be there?
Probably like 10, outside? People off of this plane?
Thank you. Yeah, here's where I'm at with this. I think it's too much. You have 84 spaces there now, excuse me, 88 spaces there now on the enterprise lot. And 10 employees, 50 for rental, 30, excuse me, 50 for sales, 36 for rentals, 10 employees, that's 96, two handicapped, that's 98. And you're asking for, that's the enterprise lot, and you're asking for 99. And I think it's too much. And I do not like how that yellow area pops in like that. And I do not like the top portion of that also. I think that's too much of an approachment to the neighborhood. And what I would like to see is you come back, work with the planning department, because I'll send them, if you notice, I take a lot of notes. I'll send them my notes and my comments. That's where I'm at. I just think it's a lot to ask for, and before we arrive at, before I arrive at a number, then there's the conditions you got in the light, and that sort of thing. So that's where I'm at, members. You guys tell me where you're at, and go along with that premise, to ask them to reduce the amount of parking, because I don't think there's a need from their own testimony. Or we could close a public hearing and take a vote as is presented to us to see. So what are the wishes of the board?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, and just sort of looking at the special permit, what do we call it? The criteria that we would have to walk through, I feel like, because we haven't heard enough about the Enterprise's business case, to even be able to answer each of those criteria versus the information that we've heard about the impacts to the neighborhood. So I'm struggling a little bit with not having enough evidence on the business case side of things to line up with for each of those criteria versus what we've heard from the community, to be able to intelligently, I think, answer a lot of those questions about social impact and circulation. Like, if we can't speak to how many rental cars are coming on and off the property, and how many employees, and how many folks either getting dropped off or parking there, it's sort of hard to answer some of those impact questions, at least for me, right now.
I have a similar concern about the criteria, and I think, for me, a question would be to the applicant, do they want a chance to come back and try to present a slightly modified plan versus some of the concerns that come up today, or answer some of the questions that we have asked? Or is this their, you know, the plan they want, this is all they have to offer? And that could be their choice as well?
Yeah, on the one hand, I'm on one hand, on the other hand. I think, looking strictly at the first sentence of accessory use, as if the second sentence that has that express parent title, it requires that the accessory use be incidental, and located on the same premises. And the request is for parking spaces in excess of the existing number of spaces. There is no definition of incidental in the bylaws that I can find, so I think it's just a common meaning, which would mean fewer, not more. And I'm just having difficulty reconciling the business objective of the requirement that it's necessary, because the structure was built at risk if that was a requirement. And I think it's also fair to take judicial notice of the legislative history of the body that writes our bylaws about their intent, and what their balance of concerns are, that we need to walk through in our consideration of a special permit. I know that the plan before the planning board was distinct. In some ways, the concerns raised by the planning board in their walking through the special permits are mitigated by the request that has been presented to this.
We can't hear.
Oh.
Sorry.
The air is. Okay. So in some cases, the planning boards walking through the special permit, because really the requirements, we have to make this, walk through the same process as the planning board, even though it's a different avenue of the bylaws. In some cases, the concerns that they had in not being able to say that those requirements are satisfied have been ameliorated by this plan by reducing the number of spaces and things like that. But in other ways, they're almost increased, because it does seem like the rental use is a heavier user burden of accessing the lot than what would be for a dealership-type of lot with dealership plates. I think we would have to walk through the same process, and I think we would have to take notice of the concerns raised by the body that writes the bylaws.
Good point, and especially on the incidental. Incidental means?
Versus in table.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's a lot. So, Matt?
No, I just, honestly, I'm not prepared to make a vote tonight, given the unanswered questions and the ambiguity. I think, no, there are other information we need to be informed to make a proper choice.
And I feel similar to Ms. Churchill's. To me, there feels like a difference between the parking for employees and patrons of the business versus the parking of the rental cars. So if you're able to, if the applicant does choose to put together more information, or if we choose to continue this, being able to speak to, like, total number of spaces and the uses of those spaces, and sort of the business case for those numbers, I think would be helpful for me, at least, in answering a lot of the questions as well.
Yes. Go ahead. So, Mr. Chair, members of the board, I appreciate that feedback. I first want to just address Ms. Churchill's comment about, I think I better understand your question from earlier, about sort of tension between that first and second sentence. I read that first sentence indicating that the activity needs to be incidental, not necessarily the intensity of the use. And I think in this case, again, parking is incidental to all other uses. That second sentence then goes on to define, in circumstances other than parking, what it means to be incidental. So I think, to your point, the first sentence establishes that the activity needs to be incidental, but parking is incidental to any use. If you're renting cars, parking is incidental for that use. So that would be the argument with respect to that. But sort of hearing the board's universal feedback, I do want to continue this hearing so that we can have Enterprise come here, better explain their business, better explain why they need these spots, so that the board can make a more informed decision. I think that that's probably best for everyone.
And I'm going to give you something that I want to see. I'm not voting for 99 parking spaces, I will tell you that right now, okay? That little jet-up, to me, just is obtrusive and unnecessary, right there, and then the top-left, right there. I think those got to be pushed back. In my calculations, that would give you 66 spots. With the 88 spots that you have, that's 154 spots. So, Brad, you can say whatever you like, I'm just telling you where I am.
No, no, thank you. And I just want to, I just want to add one thing. This, this area is to accommodate a fire truck to turn around. So, and I need to, I need to take direction from the project team. I don't decide what gets designed. I design. But I will say that this area up here, and we've shown the path of the fire truck. So that's why, that's why we have a little bit of a room up here for the fire truck. So I'm going to have to look at that after I hear from people, but I just wanted to let you know that's.
Okay, explain to me, if those, they're marked as parking spots, it says right here, eight and five, if those parking spots are full, how is the fire truck going to turn around?
Yes, if you look closely on sheet one, there's a path in a graphic of the, of a fire, of the fire truck. They pull in, and then they back, they pull into one corner, they back into the other corner, and then goes around. And this has been reviewed by the, by the fire department and the town engineering department. And we certainly have the burden and the obligation to show it again, but that's where that came from. It's not a loop, it's a pull-in, back.
It's a hammerhead, basically. Sort of a little hammerhead.
Yes.
But I think having cars that close to that property line there is unnecessary. You know, I think 154 spots, plus you have another Enterprise operation in Norwood. That's just where I'm at. I'm just one person here, but that's where I'm at on this here. So I want to see another plan, well, whatever day we continue this.
Just to keep the math straight, Mr. Chair, I mean, is 84 spaces on the existing?
Yeah, by my math, by your plan, I counted them up, they're marked. So I have 88, and, you know, Matt double-checked me. I have 84, I think, on what we call the enterprise lot. And you want 99 more.
I was just trying to get, you said the number 154. I was just trying to get.
Well, yeah, well, when I take out my little drawings here, when I take this out, and I take four spots out here, because this is your buffer zone, and you're in that buffer zone that you gave the neighbors in this here, when you take those out, I get, I get 66, is where I'm at. And that gives you, with my math, 154 spots.
Eighty-eight was 66?
Yeah, whatever, it might be 84 or 88. So that's just around that. But, there's other, there's four other members.
So I appreciate the feedback, Mr. Chair. And again, we want the opportunity to present a little more about Enterprise's business and why these spots are missed.
You can do all that, but you know where I'm at.
Fair enough.
Okay? And that we're not even getting into, if the other members agree or disagree with me, if they agree with me in both this, we're going to talk about hours of operation, lighting, landscaping, and then you do have to do site plan review also.
Yes.
Okay. Anything else, sir?
No, thank you.
Okay. David and Gary, did you guys have anything else? Okay. With that, I know we got a full November, right?
Yeah, my suggestion is a continuance to December 3rd.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to continue this. The public hearing is still open. Public hearing is still open, so you'll be able to review whatever they provide to us. December 3rd at 7:00 PM in Norwood Senior Center, and that's the Tuesday night, correct? At 7:00?
Double-check myself.
Yeah.
Rather than relying on my.
I printed raffle tickets up, and I put Thursday's date for Friday, so you have to check the dates.
Yeah.
And that's a Tuesday evening at 7:00 PM. So I'll entertain a motion to continue this public hearing to December 3rd, Tuesday, December 3rd at 7:00 PM at the Norwood Senior Center. Is there a motion? Move by Matt, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Shannon. On the motion, Joanna?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Yes. And there's no other business before us, other than, I think you guys are going to get an email, the planning board wants to make, will you explain what the planning board wants to do? And I'm going to ask you to serve in this committee with me if you're available. So do you explain?
Yeah, so this is a matter not reasonably anticipated by the chair more than 48 hours in advance at the meeting, because just last night at the planning board's meeting, they were discussing potential changes to Section 5.4 in the zoning bylaw, which would, part of the idea is to, for pre-existing non-conforming properties, if someone is making a non-conformity greater, that that would require a variance, just like it does for non-one and two-family And the other part of it would be to potentially reduce the number of applications coming to the ZBA by increasing that, you all are very familiar with the 25% number, so the, potentially looking at increasing that 25% increase in habitable floor area to something higher, where more things could be approved by the building commissioner as a matter of right, if they're not increasing or extending a non-conformity. And the thought of the planning board last night was that if something is keeping the same non-conformity, that that might be appropriate to still be a special permit before the ZBA. But they were interested in having input from you all, and suggested forming a small committee with two planning board members, two ZBA members, as well as staff, to look at the issue.
And any, any members that want to make comments?
Yeah.
Would you?
As long as we can.
Committee?
Yeah.
Okay. So Rachel and I will serve for the zoning, who I'd like to play in the bell. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Whoever entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Shannon, is there a second? Matt to adjourn?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Joanna?
Yeah.
Yes, we have adjourned. Thank you, NCM.